This conference will now be recorded.
A call to order, the city council meeting for October 27th, 2025 at 6:00 P.M. In a few moments, I will ask you to arise and join me in the pledge of allegiance, led tonight by Brenne Bauschir, and remain standing for the invocation laid by Ms. Christmas. Are you here, Ms. Christmas?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you, ma'am. Brenne, if you would come forward and stand with your sponsor, Mr. Pennell, and Ms. Christmas to be your approach. Ladies and gentlemen, let's please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, could it Texas flag?
Honor, Texas flag, where it truly used to be, Texas, one state under God, one in this world.
Good evening and thank you. Let us pray. If you'll bow your heads. Father, we thank you. We thank you for who you are. We thank you for life. We thank you for health. We thank you for strength. We thank you for your goodness. We thank you for your grace. We thank you for your mercy. We thank you for your love in the city of Corsicana. Father, we need you. We look to you being confident that when we call, you always answer, and you are our help. We ask tonight that you would lead and guide these council members. Give them eyes to see and ears to hear those that sit alongside of them and those that you have placed them here for. I ask that you would speak and give wisdom. I ask that you would move and use them to bring forth what's needed in our city. I ask that you would continue to strengthen the bonds of this council so that they may strengthen the bonds in our city. Father, I ask that you would use the council members to infuse our city with hope, encouragement, and unity. I pray that this city would be known as a city of liberty and justice for all. I pray that we would seek you first, and we would always allow you to have your way. Father, I pray that the city of Corsicana will become all that you have purposed and planned for it to be. We ask once again, Father, that you would have your way. We say thank you, and it is in Jesus' name that I pray. Amen.
Please be seated. Council, please consider approving the minutes of the city council regular session of October 13th, 2025.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Pennell. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes have been approved. Now move to item five on your agenda of the forum. Tonight, we have several. So let me read the public comments section. When your name is called, please come to the podium and state your name and full address at the start of your comments. Each speaker will be given up two, three minutes. By law, the council cannot respond to any comment or question asked by the speaker during the public comment period. Our first speaker tonight is Councilman Jim Pennell. May I raise a one?
Mr. Mayor and Council, we continue this evening with our student-led pledge program, and I'm pleased to introduce tonight's participant. Her name is Brenne Bauschir. She is nine years old. She is in the fourth grade at Fannin Elementary, represented tonight by Jessica Benz, the assistant principal. She is accompanied this evening by her parents Wesley and Amanda Bauschir and Brother Luke, a seventh-grade student at Corsicana Middle School. She is also honored to have her grandparents here this evening, as are we. At Fannin Elementary, Brenne participates in the Fannin Fantastics Choir and has received the principal's award not once, but twice. She also participates in the gifted and talented classes with Mrs. Symington. Brenne is currently on the All-A honor roll and has excelled in the new Bluebonnet ELAR program, maintaining a grade of 100. Outside of school, she plays volleyball and flag football at the Y MCA and the TENS tumbling classes at DCI. She enjoys spending time with her family and friends. She also has a pet rabbit named Apulia. I can give you a pet dog named Unfree, if you would like. Her favorite food is homemade chicken and dumplings. That does sound pretty good right now. Her favorite sport is volleyball, and her favorite thing about living in Corsicana is she said, "Our community of friends and family." So, Mr. Mayor, I invite you, the entire council, and the gallery to give a round of applause to Brenne Bauschir. We invite her family to come up, and we're going to take pictures, and I'm going to present the certificate. I just left it up here.
Hey, Luke, why don't you stand over here between Mr. Pennell and the mayor? They're interested.
Yeah, that's a good spot.
It's all right. No, you take a good one, and then you send it to me, right?
These are the pop rocks.
The next speaker is Mr. Ken Higgins.
Ken Higgins, President of the Corsicana American Chamber of Commerce, 120th Street, Corsicana. I want to thank everyone for their participation in growing this economy, making it work. We have a big election going on right now. There's several different propositions and things on the ballot, including school bond, et cetera. But there's one proposition that we haven't gotten a lot of attention on, but is important to every small business in this community, and that's Proposition 9. Proposition 9 increases the personal property tax from $1,500 to $125,000. It's an exception. So residents are putting money in the pockets, or keeping money in the pockets of our small businesses. It's important, especially right now as our small businesses have a tough time making it. This will be a major thing for us, so we urge you to vote for it. We also have tomorrow our first responders appreciation breakfast at 7:00, and police fire, sheriffs, EMT officers, all are invited for that breakfast. They should have all got invitations. I'm just going to run it out, just in case somebody didn't. We appreciate it, and thank you all for all you do for this community.
Thank you, Ken. Is there anyone else in the chamber that would like to address the council? Hearing none, I will close the public forum and move to public hearing, item number six. And we will open the public hearings. Ms. Ross, would you read the caption for item 6A?
Receive public input regarding a request for a zoning change from single-family residential district R2 to light industrial for property located on part of block 924, being four acres, also known as parcel ID 124285.
Chair recognizes Mr. Clayton Taylor, planning zone manager.
Good evening. So, this is a zone change from R2 to I-1. This is going to allow for the development of a water utility pumping station, storage facility, offices, and warehouse, a laboratory, communication controls, and maintenance facilities. This is being owned, and the owner and the applicant is B&amp;B Water Supply, being represented by Randall Scott today. He's with us. Back here. It was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on October 16th, 2025. Staff have reviewed the application and determined the property meets the requirements for the requested zoning. Future land use plan shows that this property and surrounding property to be commercial center meets residential. Notification letters were sent to 25 surrounding property owners within 200 foot. At the time of the planning zoning commission, there was zero responsive, but now we have one approval and two protests. I'll show you where it is. It's right off of Highway 22, at the very end of the city limits. This is the zoning. Currently, it's R2. See down here is Industrial 1, and we are proposing to change this area to I-1. Here are the surrounding property owners. It shows more than the prior responses, but some of them own multiple properties. And this is a preliminary site plan. None of this has been set in stone or anything, but this is what I was given that might be done if this approval goes through. And if you have any questions for Mr. Scott, you can just look us up here.
Council, any questions or comments?
Um, what, okay, so just to clarify, this is a water... What is that, Claire, I don't know?
Utility pumping station for the B&amp;B water supply lines. Now, my understanding is that we have, Darwin, if you could correct me if I'm wrong here, we have, our water lines go up to about this area, and then B&amp;B takes over around here. So this is part of their infrastructure that they need to make.
So it won't end up here with nothing we have going on, correct?
No.
So those are, they're one of our wholesale customers.
Okay.
And they desperately need additional water to areas because there are some developments in the area that aren't happening right now. It's against public water. I'm just going to go help them out.
How many responses did you say you received?
Three total so far.
And they were?
One approval, two protests. I can read them out if you'd like. Over here.
And one of them, one of the protests that I read, talking about the property value or something. Their care, concern with the property value.
Yes. I can't really speak to how it would impact the property value. It's, I know that this whole area is R2, and so it's worrying to them. It could be worrying to them that they are changing to the I-1 area, but it's not, it's not like they're putting fabrication or anything in the area. It's for water supply. So I guess I can't speak to the property value, but I don't have any concerns about it.
So neither one of the protesting properties are in the city limits. And this is a property that's right on the edge, and so all of those properties right on the other side, they could be developed into pork rendering plants if they wanted to. And so this is the only one that...
You know what?
Sorry, I had no surgery, and it's a little difficult to understand. Anything on the other side of that line, they could put a pork rendering plant there if they wanted to because there's no zoning. And so I think that's just something worth noting. As these properties have protested, they aren't in the city limits.
Oh, okay. Thank you for that. Of course, I got to ask you questions.
Yeah, you're good.
This is also, in my opinion, specific to the location and the need. I feel very strongly that in the future, there would not be any industrial development in this area. There would only be additional residential that was surrounded.
Any further questions or comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Ross, would you please read the caption for item 6B?
Receive public input regarding adoption of ordinance considering all matters incident and related to the issuance, sale, and delivery of approximately $19 million, $80,000 in principal amount of City of Corsicana, Texas combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, Series 2025, authorizing the issuance of these certificates, approving and authorizing instruments and procedures relating to said certificates, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject.
Chair recognizes Mr. Powell Rich, Director of Finance.
Good evening, Council. As much discussed throughout our budget hearing, it's finally time to accept our bond that we presented. To go over the specifics, I've invited Hilltop Securities, our municipal advisors, Marty Shu and Quinte to come and speak on this and answer any questions in relation.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Marty Shu with Hilltop Securities. We do represent the city as your financial advisor. We prepared these sale booklets before you. I'm going to just briefly go over the sale results for you. Your bonds were sold through competitive sale this morning, and what that means is they were put out on the open market, and any and all underwriters were invited to submit a bid for the right to purchase and sell your securities to the public. Behind the first tab, we have included a copy of the bid results. I'm pleased to report that the city received four separate bids, and BOK Financial Securities came in with the lowest proposed true interest cost of a 3.85 percent. Just to give you an idea, we like to see a minimum of three bids. That's what we would consider a successful sale, so we're happy with four. Behind that first tab of the bid results, we have included a full set of the final numbers for you so you can see exactly what that interest rate translates to in dollars over the life of the bonds. I think it's significant to note that in all of our preliminary planning numbers and the preliminary numbers that were presented as part of the notice and intent to issue the COs that were presented, we were using an estimated 4.5 percent. So your final interest rate is well below all of our preliminary estimates. And as you've been following the headlines, you've seen that interest rates have started to trend downward. So timing is everything. This has really been in your benefit. Good time to be in the market. And behind tab B, just to further accentuate that, we have graphed this rate against the bond buyer's index. So the bond buyer's index is a third-party municipal index that's used to track the municipal market over time. They release a weekly rate that we think of as a benchmark for our market, and right now, the weekly rate released for the most recent one was a 4.72 percent. So as you can see, you're well below that of the 3.85. Excellent results. As part of the normal bond issuance process, the city did have to apply for purchases upon rating. So city staff had to meet with S&amp;P Global, answer a lot of questions, provide a lot of information to the rating agency so they could conduct a full credit assessment on the city. Unfortunately, the outcome did not turn out as we wanted. S&amp;P did downgrade the city one notch from a AA minus to an A plus. They have included a full report of their rating analysis behind tab C. They've released that in connection with issuance. The good news is, is that the downgrade did not really impact you from an interest rate perspective because your winning purchaser, the city in the issue, was able to qualify for insurance, which means your purchaser paid a one-time upfront premium to insure the bonds. Thereby, that allows the city to borrow the higher credit rating of the insurance company, which is at the AA level, so it ensured that when you went out to the market or that your bonds were priced to the most favorable level possible from the market today. So, all of that is very positive. This is the final step in the bond issuance process. So by adopting the ordinance before each night, you are effectively accepting this bid to underwrite and locking these rates into place. They will be fixed for the life of the issuance. These bonds were structured over a 20-year amortization. And as Mr. Rich already mentioned, this has already been structured into your budget and your tax rate planning for next year as well. I am happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions or comments? Hearing no questions or comments, we thank you for your guidance, and thank you, Rich. I will now close the public hearings. Ordinances, Ms. Ross, will you read the caption for 7A, please?
Council will consider approving a request for a zoning change from single-family residential district R2 to light industrial I-1 for property located on part of block 924, being four acres, also known as parcel ID 124285.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve a zoning change from single-family residential district 2 to light industrial for block 924, being four acres, also known as property ID 124285.
Motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Johnson. Any further discussion? Ms. Ross, please call the roll.
Councilman Jim Pennell.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Woolsey.
Aye.
Councilman Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Hill.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Ms. Ross, would you read the caption for 7B?
Council will consider adoption of ordinance considering all matters incident and related to the issuance, sale, and delivery of approximately $19 million, $80,000 in principal amount of the City of Corsicana, Texas combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, Series 2025, authorizing the issuance of the certificates, approving and authorizing instruments and procedures related to said certificates, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve authorizing the issuance of combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation.
Motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Woolsey. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I actually have some. Was this email to us? This is the first I've ever seen this booklet, correct?
That particular booklet, yes.
Okay, so I actually want to table this vote because I was not aware that we dropped from a AA minus to an A plus, and I kind of want to read more into what happened. I would feel more comfortable if I can get a grasp of what's going on and why we dropped, so we're not... Just to make sure that, I mean, $19 million is a lot, so I kind of want to read more into why we dropped from an A minus, double A minus.
Okay, there's still a discussion. So, can't tag right now. We have to answer this motion. So, since we have discussion, could you please come back up here and answer a few questions? Sorry.
Sorry, I'm so sorry. This is for us. I'm seeing that we dropped from a AA minus to an A plus. So what were some of the main, if you can...
I can absolutely summarize it. In my opinion, the crux of the rating decline hinged specifically on the general fund balance drawdowns over a multi-year period. So right now, at the AA level, your general fund balance as a percentage of revenues and expenditures, so each rating agency looks at those metrics a little differently. Yours is about half of where the median is that they would like to see you at. And so they had mentioned in previous years that they were noticing that there were drawdowns. I think they kind of unfairly penalized you for last year's drawdown of fund balance because those were for one-time capital expenditures. Typically, what they are concerned about is that if you continue to draw down your fund balance, they're worried about there being operating deficits that are not being addressed. I don't think that's the case with the city, but I think it's going to take time and illustration to prove that to the rating agencies.
So they don't, I guess, they don't care that we had a specific plan to draw down our general fund over the past three or four years because it got up to about 150 days operating, and we said, "We don't need that much cash sitting there. We need to be using that for things." And so we took like three years to draw that down a little bit at a time to get it down to that 90-day limit, which is what the general guidelines are. And so now, we're being penalized because we had money not sitting, doing nothing, and they don't like that we had a plan.
That is sometimes the double-edged sword of the rating process. Unfortunately, they are the three-hundred-pound gorillas. They will tell you that there's all sorts of factors that they look at when evaluating their rating, and there are also other global, larger geopolitical issues that they take into account, too. So I think we've been in a kind of a prolonged period of volatility, and I think that volatility with those planned drawdowns are not, from their perspective, where they would like it to be in relation to their medians. And so a lot of it, too, is also based on some of your peer groups and what they're doing over the course of the time. But I think you having a plan is important. I think if you instituted a plan to build your fund balance up to their median level, it would help satisfy their requirements to bring you back up to the credit rating that you just, you know, came down.
And let me say this. One of the things I've written there is that unexpected expenditures also. And I think that this is one of the main reasons we're doing this issuance, is to get rid of some of those unexpected expenditures, like a lot of the infrastructure that we have is just needing replacement. I say this over and over again, but you know, a few years ago, on Second Avenue in front of the Shell Station, there was a main break. It cost over $500,000, and it was unexpected. We've had a couple more, the 250 and 350 bank. It's unexpected. So, yeah, it's a drawdown intentionally, but also unexpected expenditures. And I also read that some of the fact that, you know, we're having difficulty in the hiring process of some of our employees and in other areas. All this is going to help us get to the point where we need to be to not have this. That being said, a double A minus, in your opinion, in compared to cities, I don't know if there's another city that gets $25,000 as a double A, not minus.
I will say this, you know, the higher your credit rating, the better, right? We always want you to have a higher credit rating, but it does come with trade-offs, right? And sometimes you have to, you know, if we look at a triple A credit rating, that's the best possible rating. You can have the levels of reserves that you have to have to maintain that. In some cases, double A short. It's not worth it because you've got the money sitting there. So, you know, it's certainly a policy decision for how you'd like to move forward with it. There are about, I would say, at the A-plus level, you are now in about 15 percent of cities within Texas. It's still a great rating. You should still be proud of your position. And the good news is, is even though you did receive the debt... And the good news is, is even though you did receive the downgrade, your issuance was not impacted because of the insurance that was purchased in connection with it. So your bonds were sold like they had a AA credit rating. So the interest rate that you actually received reflects that of a AA because you did have the availability of the insurance. I will say, not every city and not every issuance qualifies for insurance. So that should also be testimony to make you feel good that you did have the availability to access that insurance as well.
Is there a time constraint on making this?
Yes. So your bonds were sold this morning via competitive sale, and the underwriter was given award pending council approval. So there is market risk to declining that offer. So if you reject the offer and you bring your bonds, we're, we're, we have to bring them back for another sale because these interest rates are based on the pricing and snapshot of the market today. And so if you decline this, we would have to repost and resell the bonds and tie that in connection with your next regularly scheduled council meeting. There is some possible risk that you may not have the same purchaser show up again, right? There might be some reputational risk that if somebody puts in a bid that they think, okay, they're not going to actually approve the bonds, so we're not going to bid because they are working on reselling orders and indications of interest. That, now, I have never seen that happen where, you know, a city has rejected and had to come back and not received a bid. You could, there are other ways we can approach it too. We could select an underwriter so that you know you have a guaranteed purchaser if you wanted to postpone the sale. But there is also interest rate risk associated with that because this is based on our, our snapshot of interest rates today, and if there is postponement, you are subject to market volatility. So it's possible that rates could come in a little bit higher, you know, when we come back from a sale. So it is somewhat time-sensitive.
Are these bond ratings kind of like credit scores where you can do 100 things right and one small thing goes wrong, and they just dock you for the one small thing?
Nailed it. 100%. Yes, that's, it's exactly how I, I think of it. It is exactly like a credit score. And I, I really think, despite all of the other metrics and everything, it really boils down to that fund balance and just that fund balance percentage being outside of their medians for the AA is what caused the downgrade.
Any further discussion? Ms. Rosson, would you?
I think, I think you need to add on your motion to table. I think you need to see if there's, is there...
Can you have a motion to table? Wouldn't you have another motion already? I'm not, Chris, you still want to have a table? Are you going to draw or stand?
Well, I'm listening. If we table it, it's going to hinder us from the bidder, and I don't want to do that. So, I will, I'm not, I'm not.
All right.
And also, tabling is a main motion. It says we have a main motion resolved.
Main motion.
Yeah, tabling can't supersede it.
Right, yeah. So we will proceed. The concern has been withdrawn, so we're all set. Ms. Rosson, would you call the roll, please?
Councilwoman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Wolsey?
Aye.
Councilman Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Pennell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Motion is approved. The next two items, three items, no activity tonight. We will go to item 11. Miss Laius' announcements. I have a few. October 28th unveiling of the Billy Joe Schaefer bronze statue. That's tomorrow at 5:00 PM at 112 West Sixth Avenue. November 4th, the Economic Development Partnership Meeting, 9:00 AM at Corsicanah Public Library. November 6th, Fall Festival and Grand Reopening of the Peace Officers Museum at Pioneer Village at 4:00 PM. That event will last to 7:00 PM. And on November 20th, we have tree lighting, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM in downtown Corsicanah. Councilwoman, do you have any further announcement that you'd like to share tonight? Hearing none. The council will reassess and to close session to receive attorneys advice on legal matters presented to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to deliberate on certain matters concerning real property presented to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, and to discuss economic development negotiations presented to 551.087 of the Texas Government Code.